To order the Board of Education meeting for Monday. You just turned it off.
It's not on.
It was on. For Monday, May 8th, if everyone would stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have all Board members present except for Tammy West. We are needing an adoption of the agenda, including the supplemental personnel report.
I'd make a motion to accept it, including the supplemental report.
And that includes the amended item?
The amended, yes.
I'd make a motion, we accept the amended agenda.
Okay. We've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Jared, all in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. Jeff, were you able to look over the bills?
Yeah, everything's fine.
Okay.
I'd make a motion, we accept the financial report.
We've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. We've, we get to do some special presentations tonight. First off, we have some Dodge City High School seniors who are being acknowledged for distinguished certification. First off, we have Beth Harmon. She is now a nationally registered Kansas licensed EMT. Marcel Perez, also nationally registered Kansas licensed EMT. Daniel Reyes, nationally registered Kansas licensed EMT, Kansas certified nurse aide and Kansas certified medication aide. And he is the first one to receive all three before graduating. Is that, yes, very good. Impressive.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Congrats, guys.
Thanks. Mr. Pelton, thank you.
Okay, we also have Dodge City High School seniors who have been selected for the 2023 IC Centers for Academic Excellence, Intelligence and National Security Summer colloquium. Mr. Minga and Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. Mohammed's not here tonight. He has an athletic event, but we certainly want to.
Absolutely, congratulations.
Good job, man.
You're representing the class. You're going to double up here. But I do want to add also to the congregation of this year, because this is one of the most impressive fields in career areas. So you've got to hit the start. You have wonderful things, and we'll be very proud of that. So I'm very proud of you representing us. So thank you very much. Thank you. Anything you want to add?
No, just actually, thank you. A lot of this is, I know I'm an expensive course at the high school, but this is, this is what we're seeing right now. Starting to see students and what they're performing, what they're doing, meeting. And he has an excellent opportunity to work for our government and.
Fantastic. Congratulations, partner.
All right, next, not quite as much fun, but, but we have a public hearing to amend the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. Hammer.
Good evening. At this time, this is just an opportunity for anyone in the public to come up and make a comment. Later on, I'll be asking the Board to approve and amend our budget to be able to receive some more funds that we're eligible for, but I'll go over that later. This right now is just an opportunity for anyone that has any comments to come forward and, and express their questions or concerns or comments.
So if you would like to do so, please approach the podium now. Okay, we'll see you later, Hammer. We've got Stuko reports next. First up is Grace Pelton from Dodge City High School.
While Grace is making her way up here, I would like for all three of the high school and, and middle school representatives to stick around until after the third one. And I have a little certificate for you, since this is your last presentation to the Boards.
Good evening. This month is the final homestretch. We have three weeks until everyone is done with the school year. This Friday is, our student council will be hosting a dodgeball tournament. It will begin around 2:00 PM at the high school. During this tournament, we will be collecting stuffed animals to donate to the Ford County Fire and EMS. Admission for the public will be $2 or one stuffed animal. This Friday night, beginning at 7:00 PM, will be the annual Drill Team Spring Show. They will be showcasing a number of this year's performances, as well as some new ones. This Saturday will be the band's 72nd Annual Pop Concert. Tickets will be available in the athletic office, students for $4 and the rest of the public for $7. Dinner will take place at 5:00 PM, following the show at 7:00 PM. This week in the sports world is the last week for a lot of our teams. Today, softball played against Wichita Heights at 2:00 and 4:00 PM. The first game ended with Dodge beating Wichita Heights, as well as the second game. Softball will be competing against Liberal here 4:00 PM on Thursday. Soccer has senior night tonight and began playing around 5:00 and has another game at 6:30. The score is currently one and one. Soccer will be competing against Liberal, as well at Liberal, at 5:00 and 6:30 PM. Golf won the league title. This was the first year golf has won in the past 10 years. Aiden Robinson received WAC Player of the Year, as well as Keaton Bogner, Grayden Gamblin and A.J. Peters were recognized for the first team All-WAC Players. Coach Maple was named WAC Coach of the Year. Tennis finished with four qualifying for state. Track has a JV meet tomorrow in Hutchinson. Baseball C-Team had a game today at 4:00 PM. They ended the game, demons winning 10 to 6. Baseball will be competing against Liberal here on Thursday at 4:00 and 6:00 PM. Track Regionals will take place the 19th and Track WAC will take place in Great Bend this Thursday. Senior Alexandra Morales qualified for Debate and Forensics State and placed third in Infinitive, Ten and Prose Interpretation. Tonight at 7:00 PM, we have Night of a Thousand Strings, bringing both middle school and high schools, high school together for an orchestra performance. Our very own JORTC went to Drill Team Nationals in Orlando, with Team One receiving eighth place and Team Two receiving 21st out of 33 teams. Thursday, the 18th, will be the seniors' last day of school. The rest of the school will finish on the 25th. Graduation will take place at 10:30 at the United Wireless Arena, with speakers Nelson Lucely, Sarah Orege, Charlie Bitler and myself, as well, as well as a performance by the Class Act Corral and Chamber Orchestra. I would like to take the opportunity to thank you for the amazing experience I've had. This will be my 20th board meeting, including 8th grade TOC and this year. I am grateful for what the school district has taught me and the community I've been a part of. I am excited to take everything I've learned here in Dodge City and take it with me as I continue on in my future to Pittsburgh State. Thank you for giving me this awesome opportunity to present. And for the last time, any questions?
You've done a great job. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Already done.
So Lauren and Shereya have something to look forward to as they.
There you go.
And next up, we've got Lauren from Comanche Middle School.
Good evening. On Thursday, April 27th, the 5th graders from Ross, Central, Sewell and Beeson visited CMS. Myself and Roxanna, a 6th grader stu-, a 6th grade Stuko representative, spoke to them about Stuko and ways to get involved at CMS. On Friday, May 5th, Stuko sponsored a dress-up day in recognition of Mexican-American Heritage Day. Students were encouraged to dress in red, white or green, or other appropriate Mexican heritage clothing. This Thursday evening at CMS is our Title One Night, Education Exploration. Education Exploration is a showcase of academics at CMS. The theme is "Under the Sea," so Stuko sponsored a dunk tank for the event. The dunk tank brings more participants to, to an important night. We had a dunk tank at Education Exploration two years ago, but did not have it at last year's event, and there was a significant decrease in attendance, which is why we wanted to sponsor the dunk tank this year, because what student doesn't want the chance to send one of their principals into cold water? The Dodge City Fire Department is donating their time and resources to fill the dunk tank with water. Next week is the CMS musical, Moana Jr. Stuko donated $500 to the musical to help cover production costs. Several Stuko members, including myself, are involved in the show, which will be performed for the whole school on Wednesday, May 17th. The public is invited to attend the show on Thursday, May 18th and Friday, May 19th at 7:00 PM both days. Tickets are $3 for adults, $1 for student, and kids that are not in school yet are free. The cast has been working hard on the show since March, so come see Moana Jr. next Thursday and Friday. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
You've done a great job. All right, finally, we have Shereya Alvarez from Dodge City Middle School.
Feels like the longest walk up here every single time. We will be having, oh, we will be having our summer themed dance this Friday, May 12th. We are looking for chaperones, so if anyone would be interested, please email Amanda Zayas. Also, on May 12th, will be our dodgeball and volleyball tournaments for our 6th, 7th and 8th graders. On May 18th, we will have our annual Stuko IT Day, where we take our two specialty advisories and go to the movies to celebrate our hard work throughout the year. We will be hosting our uniform drive soon as well. The uniform drive is a way for our students to turn in unneeded uniform items for incoming 6th graders and anyone who needs it. On Friday of last week, we had our final pep assembly, which showcased Stuko, band, track and field, cheer, drill team, and lastly, girls and boys soccer. Our 8th grade promotion ceremony will be held on the last day of school in our main gym. Cardinal Jam, our talent show, will also be held on the last day of school, so please watch our performers if you can. Our MCs will be myself and Yuretsi Kobian. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. You three come up here. Mr. Skinner, you'll go up for the picture, so come on up. You've worked your way up. I don't have a gift card for you, Mr. Skinner, but you'll be given. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
All right, come up here. You give a lot to make these presentations, and that walk is long, and I know it makes you nervous, but I hope that you've learned some skills in how you do it, like you said. You also, as it is in Duke or high. Well, I have a little token of appreciation on behalf of the board. That's a sonic card. Don't spend it all at once. That'd be a lot of ice cream, but, so, but anyway, thank you is what we're trying to say, okay? Appreciate all the work you did. So let's smile and. We do appreciate the updates you provide.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
And if that young lady thinks that's a long walk up here at her age, you wait till you turn the corner on 60. If I had a nitro pill, I'd probably take it now, just eliminate the pain in my chest. So, my how the year has flown. We, it seemed like just yesterday I was here talking about all the stuff that we do all year long, and once again, I'm back here, but I went to bed last night thinking, I hope I can get up in time and make it to that welcome back to get donuts, and I woke up and it's May 8th. So. I did something a little different this time with our principal report. Normally, you just submit things that are going on in your building. Did want to highlight a couple of things that are happening that I think are very important for our elementary school-aged kids. Today, Miller hosted the Dodge City High School Choir Tour. We also have the Jazz Band coming in soon. We'll have the middle school Drill Team coming in, and I know these organizations will be going to all of the grade schools, but I think it's very important that the upper grades get a chance to come down and show their wares to our younger kids, because we don't have the athletics, we have very few extracurricular things available to our kids to kind of be that carrot for them to continue to work hard. I mean, you can only throw state assessments out there so many times, and we'll do well with them. So, but I, I think that that's important, and we haven't had the Jazz Band in our building since I've been there, and I just think that that's with our instrument tryouts that we just had and most of the, all of the buildings I've had. I just think that that is imperative that we get more of that going on in our building, because those are the kind of activities the kids need to be in to become that well-rounded student. But with my, I sent two questions out to our fellow principals, and they were very gracious in getting back with me. The first one was, how are you celebrating the end of school for your students? And I'm not going to go through each of them, but there's a common thread or common theme in there. Graduation, in quotes, kindergarten transition, end-of-year barbecue, a hamburger fry, and I mentioned those two specifically because there's a lot of public contribution that goes into that. Awards assemblies, pre-K graduation, field days, fun days, a spring fling beach-themed dance at Sewell. Nothing in there about speedos, so we'll, we'll go with that. Fun day, talent show, and we've done a talent show the last few years at Miller, and it's just great to see some of those kids that were so shy as first, second, third graders, they're getting up singing solos or duets now. And they keep trying to get me to do it, but I'm a little stage fright. Neon Party Scooter Rink, not quite sure what that is, but might try to crash that one. Annual tug-of-war. So, a lot of things going on that I think are important for our grade schools as far as recognizing the efforts of our kids throughout the year, especially 5th graders, of which I know our school will have a walk with the graduates at the high school, and I think each of the other elementary schools had the opportunity to send out invitations to their students from way back when. And we, at Miller last year, we had 16 kids show up, which is just about double what we usually have, and hopefully we have more. Second question that was posed to the principals was, what has been the highlight of the past school year? And I'll just throw out some little words here, or little phrases here, growth in our students, overcoming challenges, kindergarten progress, student growth and not just academics, but more importantly, life skills. 5th grade students who have matured, lots of growth, well-attended title nights, the interactions between our staff and families every day, the relationship piece. And one that, in my opinion, is, is ultimately what we're trying to do is more and more fidelity with the instruction of our curriculum. And I think in our, when we start looking at our fast bridge screening data during PLCs this week, we're seeing great growth in certain spots. Overall, it's, growth is the main theme in all that, and I, I think that that's important. And, you know, as far as my colleagues go, I think each and every one of them is dedicated to the continued growth of each and every student in their building. And I'm proud to work with these guys. I, I'm kind of the quiet guy in the group, never really have much to say. So, but I, you know, these guys have, have really pushed the wagon down to, down the trail and enjoy working with them all. So, any questions before I receive my certificate? I thought I was going to be, get a certificate, maybe I was going to get certified or certifiable, but.
I think that's it.
That's the way to avoid any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up is recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the Board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. The President shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. And tonight, we've had Mr. Falcon from Compass Behavioral Health asked to be on the agenda, so we understand you have 15 minutes or less.
Okay, so I'll move past. So my name is Richard Falcon. I'm with Compass Behavioral Health, and I was wanting to talk about behaviors and behaviorism and kind of give some insight, because we at the mental health are starting to see more and more behaviors, and not only, it's, it's not only just in the community, it's everywhere. It's, it's nationwide. It's becoming more of a, more of a problem, and I was trying to use my resources of how I could inspire you in the different behaviors. So when we talk about behaviors, a lot of us who first associate behaviors is with our two-year-old or three-year-olds, where we call them the hard years. And keep in mind that two- and three-year-olds, kids are supposed to push the boundaries. They're supposed to argue with you, they're supposed to do all these different things, and that's normal development. It's up to the caretakers to help them to develop well during those earlier years. But this is more about the more extreme behaviors. Yeah, I'm, I'm having problems moving it. Okay, thank you. So disorders, major disorders are caused by, or major behaviors are caused by disorders. And so to kind of understand them, when you deal with people with depression and anxiety, this is a serotonin issue, and people with depression, a lot of people think it's people that are sad, that are suicidal, but these depressed kids can actually be very violent and be very short-tempered because of the serotonin in the brain. I'll explain that later. So it's just much more than just being depressed, and anxiety is a serotonin issue also, but the problem with anxiety kids is they have massive anxiety attacks and they don't know why. So a kid that has major anxiety, his heart will start beating 90 miles per hour for no reason, and he feels like he's having a heart attack. Now, these two type of behaviors with depressed kids, they don't like to come to school because they're so tired and they're wore out because the serotonin's not doing what it needs to be doing in their brain, and so they start to struggle and start to have an attitude. And same way with anxiety kids, they get this phobia and this fear of coming to school, and they start to have major behaviors because of this. And then the other one is ADHD, and this is different from the other two, because it is more of a dopamine problem. Now, the great thing about ADHD is it's pretty easily taken care of. I will say depression and anxiety is 90% treatable in the mental health. We should not have problems with these disorders, but the problem is, is are they getting the help and are they consistent with the help? With ADHD, it's basically a focusing problem because of the dopamine system, and what we find out is if kids cannot focus for a period of time, their brains are not made to do that, so when they get pushed into focusing longer, they will start to have what we call disassociation or a meltdown. So these kids will, so these kids will ever get, will get so upset that they'll have the meltdown or they'll dissociate where they will actually shut down or just won't listen to you. Now, everybody disassociates, like there's some of you right now that I've lost in this conversation, and/or I triggered a thought and you're thinking about your own kids and you stop listening to me. So disassociation is normal when the brain gets overloaded. But the nice thing about ADHD, it's usually pretty easy to fix with medication. The problem is, is a lot of people want to assume that everything is ADHD, when it could be the other two disorders. Oppositional defiant disorder is my favorite. These are the kids that love to argue, and I will tell you right now, they will win every time. I don't care how good of a teacher you are, they will get their needs met, and that is the problem, because if you argue with them or you try to prove that you're right and they're wrong, they will win. And I had a teacher say, they didn't win. I suspended him. Yeah, he's at home playing Xbox and feeding his ADHD. They win all the time, and the best, there's like techniques that you can use of how to deal with oppositional defiant disorders. But the idea of oppositional defiant is, the rules didn't apply to me, they didn't make sense, so I don't believe in them, and I'm not going to follow them. And then the other one is trauma. Trauma is kind of its own territory, so keep in mind, ODD, medication doesn't help with that. That is a learned behavior, that is strictly therapeutic, that helps with that, and trauma is the other one. We are seeing more and more traumatic kids in our communities. There's estimated that there's 30 to 50% of your kids have experienced severe trauma, and severe trauma affects how the brain is developed. I'll go to the next one. So, this is your brain, and this is what your brain looks like in our world. So the way that the brain is built is from the bottom up, from the brain stem up. And if you look at conception to one-year-old, this is the, the brain's, brain stem that develops the blood pressure, the heart rate and the body temperature, and then you go to the dicephalon, and this is from one to two-year-olds, and you'll start to develop your sleep, your appetite, your arousal. The limbic system will start to develop one to four-years-old. This is motor regulation, emotional reactivity, sexual behavior and attachment. And then your cortex is the last thing to develop, and it, it doesn't get fully developed till you're 25. This is why your teenagers make stupid choices, is because their brain is not fully developed. This is also why they can't decide what career to pick in college, because they don't have those development needs. Now, this is a training that I do that takes about three hours, so there's a lot in here, but I'm going to try to shorten it really quick. If something happens in the early childhood development, and what I need you to understand is, between zero or conception to seven years old is when the brain starts to wire to, to, to build itself. After about seven years old, then the brain will start to cut off neurons and make better connections, but you actually start losing neurons after seven years old, but your brain will still rewire to build a better brain after that. So we do know that the brain rewires. The problem is, is if you have early childhood trauma, you are going to delay the development of this brain. So let me go to the next slide and then want to come back to this side. So, on the left side is a normal brain, but on the right side is what happens when the brain doesn't develop well. It's going to go, you're going to have a lower limbic system and a cortex system, and those systems will not develop. Okay, go back. And so what happens is, the stuff that you guys need to educate will not be there. What you guys work on is the cortex, the abstract, concrete thought. What we work on is that whole bottom, bottom part of the brain. And so if you look at DA, that's the dopamine system and the serotonin system, and then NE is the norepinephrine system, but that's also your cortisol and your oxytocin, and oxytocin is why kids have no empathy. If they do not develop that system, they will not know how to love or care about anything. When that system gets underdeveloped, you're going to have problems with them even wanting to do anything. And so this, this brain, when it's underdeveloped, you start to have problems right away, and so what we have to do is we have to go back and fix the brain stem, the dicephalon and the limbic system for them to be, to be educated. And if it doesn't, then they're going to have problems with their appetite, their motor regulations, attachment. The other thing that I need to stress is like kids that are underdeveloped, and their brains are underdeveloped, don't understand rewards and consequences. Like when people try to use rewards and consequences, they're not even developed enough to understand that. They don't know what a reward is, and so they don't get it. And the other thing is because the brain. And the other thing is because the brain, uh, and, and we see this all the time, if trauma happens at an early age, uh, this is why you see twelve-year-olds acting like seven-year-olds or six-year-olds, is because the brain will stop developing. It will actually stop growing. And there are pictures of a brain that is actually smaller, uh, than a normal brain because the brain actually stops growing, uh, in severe trauma cases, especially when that trauma is untreated. Okay, I'm gonna jump to, how am I doing on time? Doing good, okay?
About five minutes.
Okay, this is, ooh, really? I'm not gonna make it. Okay. This is where I think I get in trouble, uh, because one of the things I tell people is all behavior is caused by the environment. And so then people will say, so it's my fault. And yes and no, it's not really your fault. The problem is, is the environment becomes overwhelming for the young person and the young person does not have the skills to adapt to that environment. So when I look at schools and I say, well, let me go to the next slide, and I start to look at behaviors, the first thing I look at is what is that environment doing to that kid? Because the problem is, is not the environment is bad, it's the kid doesn't have the skills to maintain in that structured environment. And this is why you have problems. So what we try to do is, one, we can change the environment by provide emotional, uh, environmental supports or teach better constructive ways to deal with, uh, stress and painful feelings. This is what Compass does. So everybody asks, like, what does a case manager do? Case managers teach skills for the kid to maintain in his environment, not only in school, but also in home, also going to Walmart and all these other things. And then the question is, is what about MHAs? So if you know what a case manager does, he goes into your classroom and he pulls the kid out and he works one-on-one. And, and that's all he's doing is building these skills. But I feel like the MHA has the most important, uh, job. And that's the person that goes into your classroom and sits there and does nothing and you're like, what are they doing? Cause they're not doing absolutely nothing? They are observing the environment to figure out how he can survive in that environment. And because we don't work for the school, we're non-biased. So it doesn't matter like what that environment looks like. The goal is, is we try to find and problem-solve him or her better ways to live in that environment. So keep in mind, not all mental health is behavior or violence, some of it's just shutting down and getting depressed. And we gotta figure out ways of how to allow them to survive in the environment because we all agree that they have to learn how to go to school, right? They have to be able to do that. And if they can't do that, they're not gonna be very successful in life. And the environment is never gonna be perfect for them. You're never gonna have a good or a bad teacher. Now, when I talk about development, the one thing to understand is you can have two different kids, right? You could have a kid who was brought up, a- and I'm telling you, this is what I think you guys are seeing. You have a kid that is brought up in a home that has no structure, he's on the Xbox a lot, he's watching anime, SpongeBob and SquarePants is really bad for your brain. And what happens with this kid watching this stuff is he's seeing images at microseconds. They're going so fast and so quick that his brain is trying to, uh, make sense of it and is trying to wire to make sense of it, that when this kid goes into a classroom and sits with a teacher who is really boring because she can't move in microseconds, he disrupts. Because he has a pre-built brain to move ninety miles per hour and he goes into a classroom that doesn't move at all. And so he doesn't have that skill set to maintain in the classroom. And then you have another kid who was brought up very structured, and I have a niece like this, um, which is amazing because we had a babysitter one time and like she would go and brush her teeth, she would go take a shower, she would put on her clothes, she knew to sit down, that she could watch TV for thirty minutes. I mean, this, her mom's very structured. And this girl does really well in school. The reason why she does really well in school is because there was a structure put in and she didn't have to be entertained all the time, uh, like what, uh, electronics does to us. And so that's causing the problems of why you can regulate some kids and why other kids are dysregulated. Okay, move on. This is one of the best courses I ever took in, uh, de-escalation. Uh, it's actually four days long and, uh, and I won't take four days to explain it. But pretty much what happens when we see the outbursts, when we see the violence, is one of the complaints I get is, well, your team didn't do absolutely nothing. And that is correct. When you hit the outburst, we're done. Because you can't do anything with a kid that is full-blown, uh, in trauma. We either have to fix, try to solve the kid before he gets to that point, which is the agitation and aggression, and when you learn those skills of how to de-escalate kids, uh, you will never get to an outburst if you're really good at it. But the, we're, the best part of this, and this is what we are bad at and what, uh, well, everybody's bad at, is the recovery phase. So we'll go to the next one. The problem with the recovery phase is after an outburst, we do not teach the kids better, more effective ways to deal with whatever happened in his crisis. So for instance, what we do, and I think what teachers do, is if somebody had a major meltdown, we will calm that kid down, we will make sure he's okay, and then we leave him alone. And this is what we call no-change firefighter. We taught him nothing about his crisis. We were just able to calm him down and go out with the rest of the day. In order for these kids to be successful, you have to teach them better ways to deal with the crisis that came in hand. And that's the important part, both educators and Compass Behavioral Health. And my staff do it too. They come in, they calm the kid down, you know, the kid's fine, they leave. Uh, two days later, the kid's back where he's at. We're not teaching him better, more effective ways of understanding why he got into crisis. So that's where the hire is. Oh, no, stay. That's okay. And then the abusers, where you use violence to control violence, which is kind of the mindset, right? Spank your kids, restrain your kids, seclude your kids. And all this does is reinforce that anger is how you control anger. And you're actually causing him negative ways of dealing stuff instead of positive ways of dealing stuff. Okay. So we work on several things and, and now I'm gonna go into what we do. So one of the biggest, uh, things we do is cognitive behavior therapy. Uh, all of my staff, all of the therapists are all trained in this. Cognitive behavior therapy is based on if you change the thoughts, you change the feelings, you change the behavior, that's the simplest form I can put it without spending three hours on it. Um, but it is, it is the most effective therapeutic model out there that has the most, uh, um, credits behind it. The other one that I like is dialectical behavior therapy. I'm a big believer in this and I think schools can do this. So I'm kind of a believer that skids, kids can get into men, or kids, schools can get into mental health to help with the kids. Dialectical behavior therapy is a lot of mindfulness and it really rewires the brain to teach them how to be calm. One of the great things about the high school is Bailey, Ms. Zurgur, is highly trained in dialectical behavior therapy. And she's there. And we'd be able to do these groups pretty effectively. Um, and then there's a new one called art therapy, but it's not like art therapy, it's called accelerated resolutional therapy. This therapy has been shown to reduce the trauma in adults and kids dramatically, meaning if they, and so it's, this is EMDR, which is the eye movement type therapies. Uh, this is showing that it can really, um, like when people do this type of therapy, trauma feels numb to them, like it's non-existing. And all of our, uh, therapists are trained in this and I'm trying to get all the case managers trained in this. When my wife heard about this, who is a therapist, uh, she took the training and that's why I don't have a new guitar, cause it was rather expensive. So I'm trying to overlook that. Okay, next one. And I'm almost done. Okay, so next year we are moving to CCBHC certified. Uh, so it means that we're a certified community behavioral health center and this is gonna look different. So what's happened is the state believes that, um, mental health centers needed a boost and they're putting all these, we have to like, uh, step up our game a lot, uh, to meet these needs. So this means that there's gonna be more case managers and MHAs in your school. They're gonna have to see kids for an hour and not like two to three hours at a time. Uh, they have to see them more times throughout the week because this is proven to show that, um, in states that have this, it's more effective, uh, in helping kids, uh, with behavioral problems. The other thing that we'll be moving to is we used to have a one-time, uh, full-time crisis. We will now have two, uh, crisis therapists and next year we're gonna start coming to the schools. So you don't have to send them to us with the parents. We will meet you at the school with the parents and we'll be able to assess them there. And then the last thing is we are also gonna have a full-time case manager. And I don't know what that kind of looks like yet, but it almost sounds like a case manager can deal with the kids that are dysregulated, even if they're not in our services, I think. So a lot of things are happening in the community mental health, uh, to kind of help support the need, uh, of, of, of what's happening. Also, you know, we're expected to get five more therapists and I'm supposed to get seven more case managers. So we will have a, a lot larger team, um, to kind of help with, uh, the need. Did I keep it under fifteen?
No.
I was trying to go really fast, but-
You were close.
And I cut a lot of stuff out. Any questions you guys have for me? We could do it over coffee. I like coffee. Any other questions? Well, thank you, uh, for your time, I greatly appreciate it and, uh, um, yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
We appreciate the efforts that go through Compass as well, Richard, and that's why we keep having you back because we need that partnership, so appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
You did fine.
We're ready now for the consent agenda, which includes the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel report. Approval of minutes from our April seventeenth Board of Education meeting. Approval of minutes for our April twenty-fourth Special Board of Education Work Session. Approval of internal staff presenters for June Professional Development. Approval of Carl D. Perkins Reserve Grant Award for Dodge City High School. Approval of Carl D. Perkins K-A-C-T-E Equipment Grant Award, also Dodge City High School. Approval of donation from Vanguard Music and Performing Arts to Dodge City High School Band Department. Approval of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four District Elementary Common Student Handbook. This is our second reading. Approval of Odyssey Ware Edge Annuity Software Renewal. Approval of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four Secondary Student Handbook, second reading. Approval of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Student School Bus Handbook. Approval of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four School Bus Driver Handbook. Approval of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four Nutrition Policy Handbook. Approval of revised Memorial Stadium Sponsorship Agreement with First Dental. Approval of Second Steps. Approval of migrant education data specialist, specialist job description and approval of Comanche ELA and math interventionist job description review. Any questions on any of those items? We got a motion by Jeff and a second by Jared, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Six-zero. Okay, we're ready for new business. Dr. Springsteen looks like he's first up.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Dirksen. I really appreciated that last presentation because, as you know, my wife is a marriage and family therapist, one or two licensed therapists on our, on our, um, staff here in 443. And I kind of got a picture of her game plan now. It's not really working on me, but she's trying, but not quite there yet. Um, what we wanted to do tonight is briefly provide you an informational update on our, um, mentoring and induction support plan for next year. Kelly Clark will give you, um, an overview of what we've been doing, kind of how it aligns with the KSDE requirements, as well as our intention is to continue to increase our supports for our new teachers, not only for their successful, um, induction into either this profession or our district, but also for retention and longevity in 443. Uh, but we also, I would like Kelly to talk a little bit about the collaborative process by which we're going through to design this, but then also to integrate it in all that we do, um, next year through our PLCs, through our instructional coaches, through our professional development. And so it's a pretty comprehensive and integrated plan. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kelly. Again, it's an informational item, we're still working on this final draft. So it is a draft, which you have in your, in your, um, board packet, and so I will turn it over to Kelly.
Hello. Back again. Um, yeah, so, uh, good news, um, the professional development plan that was brought to you, what it was, two months ago? Time flies. Um, it, we have initial approval on it and it goes to the State Board in June. So, so now, uh, we've begun turning our attention to our mentoring plan, since the professional development plan is well in line, well in hand. Um, and so I've been looking through and really becoming as well-versed as I can be on the regulations set forth by the state in terms of the mentoring support that we provide to our, uh, new teachers, both what I call novice new teachers, they're new to the profession, they have the, the initial license, and then our more experienced teachers who are new to the district, not necessarily to the profession. Um, also included in the plan is supports for long-term subs because, as you know, we, we rely heavily on our long-term subs at this point in time. So just a couple of highlights of the, of the updated plan and, and it really is a very rough draft that I'm submitting to you right now, just for your review, so that you can see the process that we're going through. Um, there's still a lot to be determined and we're gonna continue to work on that. I'm working, of course, closely with Dr. Springsteen, um, Jason Scheck from Human Resources. This has gone to PDC for their input and also to our instructional coaching staff. It's going to DLT Admin Council, so lots of input, uh, going into this, and so that's a process. We want to just make sure that you understand what it is that we're doing, how we're going about the work, um, and give you an opportunity to ask, um, questions or provide input that, that you would like to see. So on the consideration sheet, um, I, I did some key updates on the bullet points. Um, one of the first things that I'm doing with the plan is I'm doing a structural, uh, reorganization, so it actually aligns with the guidelines set forth by the state, so that when anybody looks at our plan, they can immediately see how it aligns with those state regulations and, and how Dodge City Public Schools is, is meeting those different regulations, meeting or exceeding them. Um, also, there are some clarifications that, uh, went into the, went into the plan itself. What is the, the, the mission, the purpose, the goals of our plan specifically? Um, why do we talk about comprehensive induction and what's the difference between that and mentoring? Um, and then also a, a clear delineation of roles of different people, not just mentors and mentees, but also, um, different PLC, building administrator, the district level, what are our roles in the, the process of teacher induction? Um, one thing I do want to bring your attention to is the differentiated support pathways. And I wish I had written down what your page numbers are in that document, but I don't. There is, uh, uh, in the mentoring plan, it actually shows on page six, so I'm hoping that you can find that it's what I call the green and gold pathways. Uh, one of the things we're doing is looking at providing differentiated support for, uh, an incoming person or a long-term sub based on what their level of certification is, what their level of experience is. So it's not a one-size-fits-all, it's what is your need. Um, and that, the pathway is determined between the mentee and their building administrator. So they sit down and it's part of our professional development plan, the administrator creates individual professional development plans, that's a state guideline, not only with our new teachers, but with all certified staff. And so as part of that process, they can then identify what pathway is most appropriate. And then the activities that that mentee participates in would be aligned with their pathway. Um, with of course, more support always being available, um, but it just, it, it makes it's differentiated to the person rather than everybody coming in doing exactly the same thing at the exact same time in the exact same way. Um, we also, um, are aligning our needs assessment more closely to our evaluation tool, uh, so that the, the mini-sessions that happen after school are aligned to our needs assessment and our needs assessment is aligned to the evaluation tool, so that everything that, that our, uh, inductees experience helps them to be more successful, um, on those evaluations, so that they can, they can be meeting the requirements that will help them be successful. Um, we're also looking at bringing into our, currently our instructional coaches, as part of their job, they, um, they do coaching cycles with our new teachers, they come in and they do, um, support in terms of instruction. That's happening already, it's, it's, it's just part of what they do. Um, so we're incorporating that piece actually into the plan itself so that it reflects the work that the coaches do as well, so that everybody, not just the state, but everybody can see how new teachers are supported through our instructional coaching program. And then finally, um, a big piece of it will be identifying how are we going to evaluate the effectiveness of the program? What data are we gonna use? How are we gonna analyze that data? Who will be involved? Um, and what are, what is the criteria for success and are we meeting that? And what are, what is the criteria for success and are we meeting that? So that's just a, take a big deep breath. That's kind of an overview of what, of the work that we're currently doing and the goal is in June to bring you a more final version of this that's already, that's gone again through P D C and all of that, so that you can look at it in its completed form. But again, this is to give you an opportunity to look through it. If you have questions tonight, I'll do my best to answer them. If not, I can take them back and we can find the answers that, that you need.
Hard for me to visualize the data you're talking about on a teacher in the classroom and their effectiveness. What, what kind of data are we talking about?
Well, when we talk about the effectiveness, we're talking about the effectiveness of our induction program. And so it would be things like, we'd look at teacher retention. Is the program having an impact on our ability to retain teachers in the district? We would be looking at teacher and principal feedback survey to help us understand, is the program meeting the needs of, of the new teacher? So it wouldn't be this program evaluating the effectiveness of the teacher. It would actually be looking at different types of data to say, is the program meeting the needs of the teachers who are coming into our district? The principals evaluate the effectiveness of the teacher using the evaluation tool. That's.
Those two evaluations would have to go hand in hand almost. Because, I mean, if a person, you know, met all the criteria here but couldn't control a classroom, you know, I mean, I'm just saying that they'd have to go hand in hand to me because. I'm just getting rung out with the word data.
Well, and, and I, Dr. Springston and probably Jason Scheck would be better equipped than I could about what are the personnel issues that might come into using actually the teacher evaluation as part of the program evaluation. But yeah, currently what we're looking at in terms of identifying data, it does, it does not include specifics from actually the teacher evaluation itself.
That makes sense. Thank you. And I just want to point out, we're, we're not looking for things to do or to create crazy, different areas or whatever. We're actually meeting requirements that the state has in place. And we're trying to do it in a way that has meaning to what we are doing. So we try to connect them together, just like you said. So. So I assure you, we're meeting the state requirements by doing this and we're trying to do it in a very effective way. And so using our coaches in this model is what they're presenting to us, so.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, next up we have Todd Duel and Victor Guerrero.
It's only fitting, isn't it, an IT presentation and they bring their devices up with them, so.
Show and tell. Good evening. The consideration we have for you tonight is to approve the purchase of Chromebooks for elementary students and for teachers. These are replacing some current devices. Most of the devices that we're looking to replace are seven-year-old iPads at their end of life. I think we've milked all we can out of them. According to Apple, they're not eligible for future updates, so they're, they're end of life. We decided to go with the Chromebook, which is a new platform for us. We're used to dealing with Windows and with Apple and iPad stuff. But the reason for the Chromebooks is that it's a very simple device or, or less expensive. And they're very easy to manage. Basically, what a Chromebook does is it gives a user access to the internet and to web-based apps. Used to be we had to get computers with large hard drives and install all this software on, on, on those. And we don't have to do that anymore. The industry is moving towards internet and web-based apps. There's several reasons for that. That allows us to use a less expensive and a simpler device. And we've demoed Chromebooks at all eight elementary schools and they're able to do what they need to do, just that and by accessing those, those apps, web-based apps. For the management aspect, we, we have a Google Admin Console, which is just a website we, we sign into. We've been using that for years to manage the Google accounts, the email accounts. And we can also use that to manage the devices and the apps that the students have access to, so we can customize that. So. And we can base that on grade level. So a student signs into the device, they only get the apps that they need for their grade level. Nothing else. They don't have access to a store. They can't get into games or anything like that. So they're limited just to those apps. Also solicit input from directors from, from other districts and that use the Chromebooks and they just, they love the fact that they can so easily manage those. As far as the, the brand that we went with, we chose the Acer. Again, we, I solicited input from other districts, from other IT directors. Dell and Acer rose to the top. As far as quality, we were looking for durability, serviceability, dependability. And, and those two brands rose to the top. Normally we go with Dell. The reason we didn't is there's a very important feature we were looking for that Dell didn't have. And so we went with the Acer. They're very durable. The, the touchscreens even come with Gorilla Glass, which is very hard glass. It's more difficult to break. Very easily serviced and we're real happy with that, so. Quote that we have is from Sterling Computers. They have a state contract. We've been dealing with them for quite a while. We're very happy with them and. Quote includes the, the Chromebooks. There are laptop cards that we'll need for grade levels that have the iPads because those cards, the, the don't, Chromebooks don't quite fit in there well. So we need to replace those cards and there's some services from Sterling that we like to use to help us deploy these and get them in place.
So Todd, are Chromebooks easier to maintain, administer than what you currently, what we currently have?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, they are. Again, when the, when the person signs into it with their, their Google email address, they will get apps that are assigned to them. You can take that same device. Somebody else can sign in, they'll get a whole different set of apps. It's all web-based. So we're not really installing much on those. If there's anything that goes wrong with those, we can completely reset it and you're good to go again.
So what kind of timeframe are we talking about from when they're ordered until we have them in hand?
As of Friday, what I was told was that the, and the model that I have here was the most popular one. I found out just last week that they are no longer in stock and they're not even making them, but there's a newer version of that in stock, in the warehouse, ready to ship. That was as of Friday, so I know other districts are probably getting in line, so.
And how, sorry?
Oh, are we using a, are we, so the K through two have been using these? Are we using these for instructional purposes in the other grade levels?
No. Couple, two, three years. Yeah, the K through two, we tried laptops. It didn't go over too well and they went back to the iPads. And, and they, they do need a touch device.
He was reading my mind. That's what I was going to ask, if there was more than just K through two, so.
K through two is still in place. The students are using those.
So with this purchase then, that, that's the end of the iPad buying large. Not that I'm opposed to that. I just want to make sure I have it right in my mind.
Yeah, for, for instructional use, yeah. I think there's some, I'll accept they're like maintenance uses them for their, their staff, but not, it's not instructional, so. They can cast, or whatever's on here, they can cast through the smart boards.
Right, a lot of those things are integrated already into the O S. That's kind of the reason why we wanted to move forward with Chromebooks. The biggest thing is a lot of the applications that we use in our district, they're all web-based. A lot of their L M S is Google. And so Chrome O S, specifically the platform that we're moving to, is already built on that. So a lot of the things that we use in the district on, on the laptops is already built into the O S. So this makes it an easier transition for the student who's already used to working with all that same equipment. It makes it easier because it's a simpler platform for them. We did talk about the login process. The login process is part of the reason why they moved, they wanted to that touchscreen device. We've integrated our Class Link portal, which is our S S O, our single sign-on. Basically, a student can just flash a Q R code in front of the camera and it logs them into their platform, so they're not wasting time trying to log in. So that's kind of the reason why we're moving forward with that as well. It's just ease of use in the classroom and try to take less time from the teacher trying to, you know, mangle with the device and waste it.
I got a quick question versus the Chromebooks. I see that they're cheaper and stuff, but like the damage on the iPads and stuff versus the Chromebooks, like, are we tracking, you know, the damage? I know that came up at one board meeting and we were talking about the insurance policy and stuff like that. Do we track, like, I don't know, I just, I'm curious on maybe on the iPads. I feel like they're a little bit more durable, but are they, have you noticed any damage difference between?
We do track it and one of the biggest things here is when we brought in the devices, one of the biggest focus with their ability. We know they're going into the classroom. And so one of the things that Todd and the technicians did very well of is we went ahead and popped these open and we made sure that the components that were in there were one, that we could actually replace them in-house, because we do a lot of the in-house repairs here. You know, our technicians are very skilled in almost everything that's on this device. We can repair in here. One of the biggest things were hinges and screens. One of, this device specifically has Gorilla Glass, meaning that it's, it's a strong glass. The thing is that I want to make sure that whatever device we bring, regardless of what grade level, that it's going to stand the test of time, basically. And we did actually have some of the technicians who kind of did what the standard four-foot drop test. At an angle, flat down, back, whatever way, they just kind of had a little bit of fun with it. We wanted to make sure.
Why didn't we ask for volunteers for that?
We just wanted to make sure that the devices didn't break easily and that they were durable. So yes, we did take that into consideration.
And Acer, they do pride themselves on making very durable devices. Even the newer model has more durability built into it, not just with the case, but the, all the ports that you plug things in and out of over time. Plug something in and out enough times every time it wiggles a little bit, eventually you're going to wear that out. They have reinforcement built into those. The charge ports are, are very common. It's a very common part that we have to replace and it goes bad. And so they've, they've built in reinforcement there, so we can go longer without repairing those. Questions?
The only obvious one, with all the new curriculum we've purchased, all of the supports in that is all web-based. Is that correct?
It's my understanding.
Yeah, that's kind of the reason why I brought up Class Link, because that's what we use and right now we have it. Student logs in and goes directly to Class Link. So yes, all of the applications that we've currently purchased automatically work on these Chromebooks.
For that price, it's probably cheaper than the parts we currently buy for laptops, the replacement prices. Make a motion?
A second. All right, we've got a motion by Tracy and a second by Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero. Thanks, guys.
Get it in quick so we get them back.
Mrs. Nether.
Good evening. I have two items for you this evening. The first one is just some information on initial needs assessment. So if you guys remember last year, with House Bill twenty-five sixty-seven passing in the summer, we had to do a needs assessment that we shared with you guys that then the business officer uses to help with their budget planning. So our schools do needs assessments in the spring and they're currently doing that right now. Our fast bridge window just closed. So they're looking over the FAST data, state assessments, information will be coming in at some point. They're looking at surveys, feedback from their, their staff to, to kind of do a general needs assessment of how things went this year and to help them get ready to set goals for next year. So that's a process that we've already been doing for a couple of years. But to make sure that we are following what's expected in House Bill twenty-five sixty-seven, we add some layers into that. And so we asked all of the schools to give us some general information, thinking in mind of barriers, budgets, and timeframe. And so I provided with the board packet tonight, a summary of what the schools shared, and that's what I want to talk through. But I also had the spreadsheet that shows you some of the individual answers to that. But barriers are pretty common across all grade levels. Of course balancing, and it's fun that Richard was here tonight speaking to you on some of that, but balancing trauma, social-emotional needs, language, socioeconomic factors with grade level expectations. Just the time that it needs for students to develop language, especially trilingual students. Again, going back to higher S E L and behavior needs and, and helping make sure the students can be supported by their teachers. Higher entertaining quality instructional staff. And then the limited amount of time for instruction, and that might be school days, time in the school. Maybe wanting or looking for extended opportunities. And then, of course, just how to build upon the tiered instructional approaches and make sure that they're meeting student needs. So budget buildings felt that they could use budget to help with professional development, collaboration time, universal pre-K, social-emotional curriculums, connections with staff, students, families, and communities, and extended learning. And then the timeframe, and this is the one I find to kind of be the funnest. We have some that are very optimistic and they think, man, we could do this next year. And then some think like, you know, it's, it's, it's quite a challenge and it's going to take up to ten years. And so our average is usually, we think we can kind of shoot for about five. I think no matter what it is, is we know it's not an easy fix. We know that our students come in, some of them are, they don't even need us. Sometimes we get in their way. And sometimes our students desperately need us. And no matter how many supports and stuff, it, it sometimes doesn't seem to be enough. So. This is the initial part of the needs assessment. There will be more information brought to you in June. And then again, the business office will be using that to help make their budget decisions. But the schools will add some more detail into a spreadsheet that we have that will, this summary included, but then that will also get posted on the website. So we wanted to share that with you tonight. Do you guys have any questions?
I just want to point out that I, I think we do a very good job of this already, that we present needs, whether they be academic or facility-wise on individual basis, because what's key about a needs assessment, it's not just a big conglomerate needs assessment. We have to make sure that we're looking at every facility and every building. And we, we recently had an open records request from K P I. And they were asking for information regarding toward this. We do it already. I just want to make sure that we are being accountable. So we did it again tonight, just to present to you that we are putting this together. We do a great job with our capital outlay committee, looking at the needs of each facility. We have a spreadsheet that shows that. We have the student council present. We have the principals lead the elementary. I mean, there are many facets of where we're already accomplishing this. I just want to make sure we can poke in some key words in our board minutes and needs assessment shows up. So that's one of the reasons that we're doing this as well. So it's, we're not making this up. It's actually happening, but I wanted to explain to you why it's happening.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to a request for approval for Zello College and Career Readiness. And I know you might think you're elementary. What are you doing up here? Asking about Zello, but. But we are, this has been used in the district since 2016, 2017 school year. Originally was called Career Cruising and several years ago changed names. And so this is something that we've been using for years. But we're wanting to bring it down to the elementary level and really kind of get our students to understand that there's a lot of opportunities out there for them and to engage them when it's kind of fun and interactive and in a very inquisitive state. And so bringing that down K through four, or excuse me, through fifth grade. At the lower levels, you only have maybe four or five lessons a year. It's not a big, long piece with them. But it exposes, what are your interests? Did you know, like, if I like science, well then here are some possible things. But it's all done in a very age-appropriate manner. And the other thing that I really like is that at the elementary level, we all know parents are significantly more engaged when the kids are little. They're asking questions about, what are you learning? Oh, here, let me help you, because they feel more confident in that content. And so this is an opportunity to engage families earlier. And so then as their kids get older and maybe not as informative about what's going on at school, parents have a stronger base of that. And a login, if they have students that are in multiple grade levels, a parent would have one login to be able to see what their kids are doing in that and then also kind of build upon that. And so as they get into high school, it helps with their, like, applying for applications because it's kind of created like a portfolio where all of their stuff is in one piece. So the reason we're bringing it to you tonight as an approval item is because with the addition of the elementary, it does push it over the $20,000 threshold. And you can see on the quote that the elementary addition is around $6,000 with a one-time, $2,000 setup fee. So next year, as we continue, that $2,000 will go away from that, so it'll be a little bit less. But to renew Zello and add the elementary, it'll be $23,627, no, 23, wow. I'm going to look at a different piece because I think we added an extra digit. Yeah, so we will have to correct what is staff recommendation. Yeah, there's an extra digit in there. So anyway, do you have questions on the request to approve Zello? And then we'll just remove that last three.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve Zello for the $23,627.85.
There you go. We have a motion by Tammy, a second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Carrie Baker.
Good evening. This evening, I'm coming up with just information only, and it's about talking points. We like to touch base with you and let you know how we have been using it within the district. So I did send out some analytics to you and we can review, but I was quickly going to go over this because I think it's pretty important to see that over 1,455 messages were sent within a year's time. So that gives you a level on the engagement that's taking place in the district. Valid phone number, subscribe family, so it looks like we're connecting with everybody where we need to. And I really love the fact that most of the time, it's really the number of messages that go out when I send it out to everyone is very close to the number of students or families that we have involved in our district. Messages and announcements sent by administrators. What's key here is that we're sending more messages than announcements. So that's really good when you're looking at engagement. Messages and announcements sent by teachers, just in one month period. That gives you a good idea there, too. And then families, one month, 6,678 messages that we receive from families. So I just wanted to give you an idea, kind of set the stage for talking points. We love it. I am coming to you and saying, however, we do have a situation where Gabcon or Gabbert was purchased by Parent Square. Parent Square has been providing a very similar service for many years. And now that's integrated into the company that we use for our website. All I'm asking is, we're wanting to do talking points again for next year. We are looking at just doing it for one year, not a multi-year contract, to give us the flexibility to maybe look at what would take place if we would make a change. Overall, it has served us very well. The couple of pieces that have been difficult, and thank you to our ID department, behind the scenes, they have made it work for some groups that it would be very difficult to communicate with. And that is one thing that we believe Parent Square might be better at. So this is just information only, let you know that we use it. It has been revolutionary, I believe, for our school district and our communication. We wouldn't want to make a change if we were providing something less for our families. So we have assured Dr. Dirksen that we will look, look, look again and do a test pilot before we make any change. But I wanted to just give you the information and maybe a lay of the land. So that's it for this evening.
She threw my name in because I'm really concerned about this. Because number one, I've received a plethora of compliments about this. Talking points has worked very successfully. So I don't want to give up something that is a positive if we don't have a suitable replacement. The reason we're even looking, not only is it integrated, but talking points, all of a sudden, is coming back to us and their price is going up significantly. And so we're being forced into something, without naming the company, it's a lot like a cable bill. It keeps going up and nothing you do changes that. And so we're looking at some other provider and see how it works. So next year, we're going to have both, as I understand it, right?
We're going to have a test pilot.
We'll have a test pilot, yeah.
We'll have a test with certain.
With a rather large group, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we're trying it in a very large group. But Carrie assures me, she's very excited because of its ability to break into smaller groups, which is part of the success of what we're seeing here. So I just want you to be aware of that and there is some good methodology going on and possibly a change coming, so.
Any questions?
Thanks, Carrie. Next up, we have human resources, Mr. Scheck.
Good evening, everyone. We have two things from the human resources office this evening. Both of them have to deal with staffing. The first one is a staffing request from Bright Beginnings. With Bright Beginnings being so heavily grant-funded, at times, there are grants that are written that have requirements for how the money has to be spent once it is approved. And those are things that you, a lot of ti, or all the time, have approved ahead of time for the writing of the grant and the submitting of the grant and have those things in the grant. And then once we receive the grant, then we have to act and make sure that we honor what we originally submitted for the grant. So this first one is for that Quality Improvement Award for two positions that are grant-funded through that grant. And one of them is a paraprofessional position and one of them is a family advocate position. Any questions on that particular request? So I'll have to defer to Bright Beginnings. AC, do you have any response for the type of degree or classification? Tammy, do you have any input?
Two-year associate. Any other questions on this item?
Make a motion?
Motion by Tracy and a second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero.
Thank you. The second request is something that was approved, meeting or two ago, as a reclassification of a part-time position, going back to a full-time position within the district. And then upon digging deeper into it and looking at it more and having more conversation about the summer months and what could or could not occur during those summer months, it was determined by cabinet to come back and request that position of the District Attendance Officer slash Homeless Liaison be moved from a nine-month position to a 12-month position. There actually has been no change in the amount being requested because we believe that the benefits provided to a 12-month position and the applicant pool that may look different from a nine-month position applicant pool because of the job security, makes up for not increasing the overall salary from where we originally requested it to begin with. Because the original request had a bunch of extra days built into it. Because when we operate from the HR perspective and from the payroll perspective, we try to keep things in nine-month and 12-month. So what you get into is nine-month with extra days. And so then you start splitting out extra days and trying to decide, so how many extra days are going to be needed of a nine-month staff member for the summer things that need to occur in this position? And that's where that conversation led to, and that's why we're coming back with the request to move it to 12-month. Yes, nine-month can be a, it's considered a full-time position in our district. Now, there's some that are not, but that's when you're getting down there below the six hours and types of things where we fall back on ACA compliance things and different things like that, so.
I appreciate that explanation because I wasn't sure how we went from nine months to a year without more money. So I appreciate that.
Any other questions on that request?
Okay. A second. Motion by Jared, second by Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. All right, Hager, we're ready for you.
Just watching the show. Good evening again. I'm going to start off asking you guys to receive some money. I'm going to end asking you to receive a building. But in the middle, I'm going to ask you to spend a lot of money. The first order of business is I'm going to ask you to amend the budget. And I explained this a couple of weeks ago, but I'll repeat it again. When we present the budget to you in August, about the only thing we know for sure is what our previous two years enrollment was. And we're allowed to use the higher number of those two. So we estimate what we think our waitings will be. So we have to use the previous two years, pick one of the, you know, the highest of the two. And then we estimate what our current year's waitings are going to be. But we don't know what those are because count day hasn't happened. When I ask you to approve that, really what I'm asking is a permission to spend up to a certain amount. So when those, and we have audits every year, we're big enough that they'll audit various areas. If those audits come in lower, well, we just don't spend that money. We've been, you know, you approved, we estimated higher, the actual waitings come in lower. We're not allowed to spend over that amount. So nothing happens, we don't have to republish a budget. Three of the last four years I've been here, we've had to republish a budget because we've qualified for more waitings than what we anticipated. Nothing like this year in terms of dollars. And two of the times previously, there was a change in the number of allotted slots for pre-K or for three-year-old and four-year-old at-risk. This year's a little bit similar. We had a lot more, so this has to do, back up. We actually went down in some areas. Our bilingual went down, our CTE went down. We had a few things that go down. We had our transportation went up. But the biggest change was in our at-risk waitings. And there was a, there was a change in, so a lot of at-risk is determined by the number of free and reduced lunches that you have. And there's two ways you can qualify for that. You, as a parent, can fill out an application, they look at the application, review it, and you're accepted. Or there's a direct certification. So if you are like a homeless child or if you're, need food services, if you're in foster care, so there's certain things that automatically make you qualify. You don't have to fill out the application. One of the changes was that if you are on Medicare/Medicaid, you are direct certified. So that was a change from last year. So last year, we had, I don't know the numbers of the specifics because some of that is confidential, but I can give you the lump sums. So last year, we had 1,112 direct certifications. This year, it was 3,276. So that number went up significantly. Now, my guess is, some of those, the 3,276 still qualified last year, they just had to fill out an application. So that's where it gets hard to say, well, X dollars is because of this change and X dollars is because of that change. So I can tell you that our at-risk went up 1.2 million dollars, but we had decreases in some other areas. So the net effect for the district is 817,551. So the lion's share of the increases, though, is coming from the at-risk and the high-density at-risk, if that makes sense. So what I'm asking for tonight is your approval to amend the budget so that we can spend those funds. Any questions on that?
Okay, Ryan made a motion. Jeff will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero.
Thank you.
That's the easy one, right?
Well, now we got, yeah. Well, actually, well, let's go on to the next one. I did, I'm going to ask you for some money to, if you've been out to the high school and you've been down the old academic hallways, you know there's, right when you start down there, there's big wide-open spaces where there's lockers. And the printout was really poor to put as an attachment, so I asked them to put it up on the wall here. But those are actually the four different areas. You know, you have basically two wings, they each have two hallways, and then there's two up and two down. So there's actually eight locker bays available and we want to take seven of those and make some classrooms out of them. So you'll see in that drawing, and just look at the first one, because the other ones are kind of mirror images. But you have one that's just a big classroom. It's about 960 square feet. And then over on the opposite end, you'll see three little rooms. One's a smaller classroom with 640 square feet. It has a closet, but it also has an office. So what we end up with when we're all said and done is seven classrooms. The classrooms will be two different sizes and then you'll have three offices. And what I'm not asking for tonight is any furnishings for those. So the reason for this, let me back up and give you a little bit of background. The one area, when we did the RSP study to look at our future enrollment, the one area that actually did show an increase, and they're feeling it as well, is out at the high school. They estimated a 3% increase, which is about 83 kids. And this will obviously hold more than 83 kids. So the question is, do we just do a couple? I had them bid at two different ways, trying to see if we would get some kind of economies of scale, if we did it all at once or just did a couple here and there. And the price came out exactly the same. I was a little disappointed in that, so I can't really look you in the eye and say, well, we get a break by doing it this way. Other than, it's very reasonable to assume that, you know, if we do this every couple of years, the cost will be higher as time goes on. So we'll save some money by doing it now. They do have, use for one to two classrooms and the offices right now. The others would be finished out and then we would furnish those as they fill them up with students. That's the tentative plan right now. Is there any questions, anything I've left out? It comes in right at about $156 a square feet, which is not cheap, but it's way cheaper than new construction, so. And it came in, well, I always think everything comes in high, but. and it came in, well, I always think everything comes in high, but there's a lot of electrical work that has to be done. And that, it's, the, you know, installing the walls and stuff is fairly simple, but there's, there's no electrical outlets. So, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask and reassure that the high school was involved in this process, and the architect was involved, to make sure Fire Marshal would approve, and we went through all the right channels on this.
Yeah, that, it took a very long time to get to this point because of all the architecture work. But yes, this is, this is what the high school asked for. They were the ones that came up with the two different sizes for the classrooms.
And, and I believe we, you, you can recall that we didn't have a classroom for every teacher, and that's part of what brought the bond issue along. And then we did. And then for the last two years, we're back to not having a classroom for every teacher. Am I correct, Martha? How many? Two. I think we have two classes. And, and that's directly related to adding the JROTC program and doubling JAG, well, actually, starting and then increasing JAG. And anything else, Martha or Matt? Okay, just, and so, so we, we already need some classrooms. And so, and, and you know, it's still a setback to me that that study didn't show more growth coming towards Dodge City than what I have heard. But we have to go with the numbers that we have, and, and I think it does make sense. Hammer brings up a great point. If we don't do it now, it will be more expensive in the future. I think that's a safe bet.
Well, maybe I'm mistaken, but I don't know, four or five years, didn't any, three or four years ago, we talked about the lockers and coming out and making that into more classrooms?
Exactly what we're doing.
Might have been right before you came on. But we had kind of already talked about that, that that, the lockers are kind of a waste. Most students don't use them, and that'd be great to be able to utilize that space.
Is there a plan, like, for the lockers? I mean, I don't know how many kids even use them.
Not that I know of.
How many, Martha, do you know? If there's kids that use lockers?
Yeah, they don't use them. I don't know what we're gonna do with them.
Can, can you come up, Martha? Yeah, one, one question, one question only.
I think that after when we, during, during COVID, when we weren't using lockers, this is gonna be way better.
So we currently, if students ask for a locker, we let them use it. Last year, we had two. This year, none that I know of. I mean, everybody has a backpack, so. And so these lockers are right, like, on the edges of the, the walls. There's none in between anymore. So it's really open space.
Just on a personal note, my youngest graduated in 2016, and he didn't use a locker. So, I mean.
So we're showing our age because we used it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, me too.
So currently, my process of making sure we have offices is because we do have a lot of outside agencies coming in. And right now, the main one for me, the first one will be Harris, Officer Harris, right in the middle. Right now, I don't want to tell you what room he's in, but he's taking a few mother's spaces, lactation room. That's where he's at right now. But we need him in a central location. And so that would be, the first two offices would be for one of the officers to be upstairs and one downstairs. And then we'll go from there.
Make a motion.
My second.
Motion by Tracy, second by Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is to replace the outfield fencing at Demon Field. And what, what that, what we have out there now is wood. These would be basically vertical, metal vertical panels that are about 12 inches wide, and they range, and, and so if you go down the left, left field and right field sidelines, those, those wooden fences are about four foot tall, and then they, they go up. And then you would have about, some of them would be six foot, and then all the middle of the outfield would be eight foot tall. But it replaces all the wood with metal panels. And this is just for the cost of the materials. We would actually provide the labor and install those. Yeah, that, that is a good question. So I asked that question, and it depends on how many home run balls get run into them. So you can fix the dent. The, the good news about that, though, is you can replace one panel at a time. So the overall life should be okay. Is it gonna need some repairs over time? Yes.
And would this be installed this summer?
That, that is the plan, yeah. So, so I asked that question. It can get dented. I, I don't know, and I should have asked what the gauge is, how thick it is, and I don't know. I don't think it's automatically gonna dent, but I, I did ask if it could be dented, and they said yes. But it can be repainted, and it can be replaced, and it can be replaced in smaller sections. Yeah.
We've got a motion by Ryan and a second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero.
Okay, so the next one, not a very exciting topic unless you happen to work out at the high school or drive around there. But, um, th- this request, so again, I put a, put a drawing in there that's pretty self-explanatory. But the plan on this is to take everything that is currently asphalt and replace that with concrete. And it's a, it's a different process than what we've used before. Right now, what's out there is anywhere from six, seven to nine inches of asphalt directly on top of clay, which isn't a great soil to be on in the first place. But what, what will happen, and you, you may have seen this on, on highways, but they'll take up the asphalt, they'll re-grind that, and I don't know what ingredients they use, but they mix a slurry and they lay it back down, and that becomes the base for the concrete that will go on top of it. So you have to have some specialized equipment to do that. It's, it's cheaper than hauling that off and bringing in new gravel or new base. One of the most expensive things on that is the cost of the freight when you're coming and going. The reason it works out there where we couldn't use it over at Memorial Stadium, Memorial Stadium had a huge elevation change. We, we raised that like five feet, and we, we installed a lot of stormwater. This is pretty much going back down just like it came up. There's not any real grade changes, so it lends itself to that kind of operation. It's not something that we've, I don't think we've used here in the school district, but it, it is recommended by the civil engineering group that we had do this. And we had it priced both ways. It came in, I think, $480,000 higher to bring in the base and, and do it like we've done over at Memorial Stadium. So it's the cheaper at it. It is engineered to last 40 years. I know it's not very exciting to spend money on concrete, and I know we can patch it for a long time at $1.8 million, but we'll never actually fix it. So when you amortize it out, it comes out to a little over, straight line comes out to a little over $47,000 a year at the 40-year useful life. So it's not cheap. But in, in that, that comes out to about $7.80 a square foot for, for all those square feet. So again, everything in orange would be replaced. It's gonna make, if you approve this, it's gonna make for a very busy summer out there. We've got carpet going in. Now we've got classrooms going in. This would be happening. There's gonna have to be some scheduling that has to get worked on, plus all the other activities that go on out there, so. It's not on there. Has nothing to do with it. We're trying to get that done and out of the way before they start anything on Loretta, or we, we might start, you know, if we do our part, it would be to the south of that, so.
But none of this will have to be torn out.
No, no, no. We, we made sure that. We kind of wanted to do that so that it's kind of done and out of the way, and they're not stepping over. If, if we get lucky and they're doing that next summer, then we don't have two different contractors or two different things going in various directions. So, and it is one of those things, because of the size and the, and the disruption, it needs to be during a summer. So we wanted to get this out of the way. We, we did, the one thing that will happen is over on the east, they do show one exit-only lane going on to Loretta, and it's not drawn in there because we don't know exactly where it is. But unless they want to put it through that green field, which I don't know how they would, it won't, you know, it'll already be paved there. So nothing's going, nothing's going down that will have to come back up. Okay, so if, if you remember the joint meeting that they showed us, and, and their, their numbers, that was based on kind of some assumptions on who was doing what. So I'm gonna get the, it was either 3.1 or 3.3 million dollars for, for paving. But that would be to separate the, the, the parent drop-off from the buses. That, that brings that loop in off the southern roundabout and brings it around to the southeast, southwest corner of, of our campus. So that's if we decide to go, go that route. So yeah, that, that could come up as another, we, those numbers will probably change. Up or down, I don't know. But yeah, this, this has nothing to do with that. They, they were saying that was our portion.
That's our portion of the project.
Here's what we don't know, is that, that southern roundabout is on our property. So I don't know if they annex us, pay part of that. I don't know exactly how that works, but some agreement will have to be made because, because they want to totally shut off that front view, and they want to run their own piece over there. So, so that's on them. So there's still some haggling and understanding to do on that. I, I don't see us getting it all done for nothing, but I don't know exactly how that works since that roundabout, a lot of it, if not all of it, is on property that we have today.
We've got a motion by Ryan and a second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, next is seats, or the, or the reserved seating at Memorial Stadium. So when we approved the final phase of the Memorial Stadium project, it included the seats for that area. And we, we talked, and we looked at a lot of different seats. And basically, we came to the conclusion, and working with Building Solutions, that we would just pick our own. So the money that I'm gonna request here, I have to bring to you because it's over $20,000. We can look at this as a change order, but right now, we have a credit of $135,000 with them because we've taken that off of their initial bid. Now, that $135 was the removal, the purchase, and the installation of the new chairs. So, so we still have the opportunity to come back and ask them to install those and, and get a price on those, or we may just choose to install those ourselves. So this, this $32,000 that I'm gonna ask you for has already been accounted for in another area. Like I said, we've got $135,000 credit. It looks like a regular stadium seat. It, it folds down. It's a kind of a plastic polymer that has a little bit of give in it. It has a mesh back. It does bolt to the actual benches that are there. It's black in color, so it won't fade to pink, and it won't turn into a dirty white. So, and it's gonna be, there's 415 of them. I think right now, we have about 560. We had, the ones at the top are gonna be removed because of the way that we're making the press box. So it ate away at a few of the ones. So there's, there's less than what we have. But that's roughly what it'll look like. Didn't, do you got any particular questions, or, I didn't want to confuse you on that. I wasn't sure how to bring it. I didn't know, you know, if it's technically a change order. I need your approval because we are purchasing it. It is over 20 grand, but just know that there is an offset on that.
Usually I ask questions to just explain something, but I honestly don't know the answer to this. Was a DC still show up? Are they all black?
They are all black. I didn't know that till today either. So, yeah, I, I asked that.
Can we go with a light gray and black?
It'll be gray. Just give it some time.
I just, I like that effect of the DC. So, well, I have to look.
I, I didn't know that till today.
Yeah, I didn't know that. But, yeah, it's probably not a deal breaker, but we'll make it work if we can.
Okay, so I didn't know I was gonna be the only one talking about this tonight. So, I can tell you that it has that ability. Pretty sure the folks that wrote this weren't planning on doing it themselves. And as far as I know, maintenance hasn't said they have the time. So it has the ability. And what I truly don't know is what kind of time that will take. And I don't know what happens after screws have been in place for a while. So I can tell you that it can be done. I don't want to, and, and I was gonna bring this up. I don't want to promise you that it will be done. It, it's bound to help when you take it out of the sun. And, and it has its own storage places that you can put it in from, from when you buy them. You know, you, you don't want them to grow legs and, and walk off while they're not actually on the, on the benches. So I can't tell you that we're going to do that. I can tell you that it can be done. It, it attaches in three places. That's part of their selling point. Does have a three-year warranty. So we can try it, but I, I don't want to look you, you in the eye and say, yeah, we're definitely gonna do it. Yeah. So in the initial bid with the, with Building Solutions, the final phase, there was, there was items in there for the purchase of, well, for the removal, purchase, and installation of these seats, and that was at 135. But again, that was all labor. This just buys the seats. And we looked at all different kinds of seats, and we couldn't figure out what we were doing, because you can spend a lot of money on, on seats. I mean, there were some very nice wrought iron, lasts forever, very hard to move. So we just weren't sure where we were going. And, and to let them off the hook, because they kind of had to get going, we said, we'll just take that off the plate, and we'll, we'll figure it out ourselves. So I talked to them. They said we, you know, they would quote the installation of this, now that we've selected that. And so we can either do that or our guys can do that.
Jeff has made a motion. Can I have a second? A second by Jared, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero.
Okay. Next on the list is kind of a, a software program that they use in transportation. It, it's an upgrade. Currently, we spend about $8,500 a year on that software. I'm, I'm gonna ask you for 30,000, almost $31,000 for the first year. It does go down to $16,000 after the first year. There's like 200 and some hours worth of training that has to come along with that. So it does drop, but it's still twice the price of what we're paying today. Some of the differences are, is that it, it has, it has some bells and whistles that the current one, well, let me start with what the current one doesn't have. Right now, it's not cloud-based. This one is cloud-based. This one, you can work remotely. So today, we have dispatchers that, you know, are on call. we have dispatchers that, you know, are on call twenty-four, seven, basically, and a lot of times, you may just have a bus driver that is sick and can't make it. They can take that call at their house, and they can get another bus driver and never have to even get on the computer. But if something happens with a bus, and, and they have to actually change the schedule or reroute something, they don't have that ability to do that remotely. They have, have to come into the office at whatever and make that schedule change 'cause the program we have today won't allow it. So, so this will allow that. It, it covers three of the different functions, which is just actually routing and planning. There's a trip tracker. There's your fleet management. It also has, uh, for lack of a better word, like a talking point, so to speak. That's not what they call it, but, but i- if, if you're, and I hate to say it, but we've had a couple of buses break down here lately. So, if something happens to the bus, it's running late, whatever, you can notify the parents that are on that bus without having to notify everybody in the school that bus number XYZ. So, it, it allows that. Um, we don't um, currently have some of the other functions, and I'm not sure that we'll use them all, but it, it does have some other potential. Um, I, I know that the IT folks looked at it. Um, it's cloud-based. Uh, you know, they, you know, they're, they're not up here recommending it, but it, it works for them and it accomplishes. It doesn't interfere with the direction that they wanna go uh, with some of our programs. So, it's, it's, it's a price increase. Um, we, we have, we do have the funds. Actually, transportation is probably the only thing that we consistently, every year, we qualify for more than we spend. So, that is the one area that we actually give money back, if you will, so...
I'll second. We've got a motion by Jamie and a second by Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, and then, very last, um... On page one sixty-seven, you can kinda see a, a proposed drawing, and more importantly, where that, I call it a pavilion or a canopy buil- building, but basically, it's a concrete slab with a cover over it that's gonna be in the southwest corner of the field. I think that's where they do the watermelon um, feed or scrimmage or, or, there, you know, there's some activities that go on there. So, um, Building Solutions has kindly offered to donate um, the building part, portion, and, and Dodge City Concrete has offered to donate the slab, and um, I was supposed to get a cost on what that was gonna run, and I haven't seen that from them yet, but I can promise you it's more than five hundred dollars, so um, I need you to um, approve that donation, if you would.
Motion by Ryan, second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Thank you very much.
There will be some appropriate plaques on the uh, pavilion itself, recognizing the donation of both contributors, so I just wanna make sure you know that. But I think it'll be a great gathering place. Every game that it is attended, there is always a fundraiser or something, and so I'm sure it'll be well-used and, and utilized, so...
I would, I would like to also say thank you to the board for like, going back and doing the local. Like, I know that was a big push when I got on here, and you, Dr. Dirksen, and everybody that's worked with them, but I think that shows, when you work local, that they wanna give back to, they're the ones that give back to our kids, so, thank you.
That's a great comment, and Memorial Stadium is a great testimony to the fact that we've made that effort very strongly, so, and, and, and it's turned out great, so I couldn't be happier, so, you bet.
We're ready now for Board of Education Member District Responsibilities. Park and Rec Advisory Board, Ryan? Um, Bright Beginnings Head Start?
Yeah, I've got a D note too. Uh, sta- celebrating Women's Week, uh, the staff and students, special activities and theme dress, wait, did I get that right? See, special activities and theme dress updates throughout the week. The day is mellow. Home visits next week from May seventeenth to the nineteenth for all students and families. A special parent event on May twenty-third to celebrate transition graduation for students, and then finalizing plans for uh, Summer Academy in June as well as curriculum planning session.
Do you have special education?
Our staffing and the legis- legislative issues and funding issues, and that is uh, you know, staffing for both districts is, is critical, and they are peddling as hard as they can.
On this evening's news, Hutchison is having a special board meeting because the staffing needs are so critical in Hutchison, that they're looking at uh, possibly closing a school uh, to increase class size and to eliminate the number of teachers that are needed. And uh, uh, I, I don't wanna just narrow this to our district and Special Ed Co-op, 'cause it's statewide. I mean, there's, there's a chronic issue of being able to fill all the vacancies that have occurred, and, and that was just on tonight's news.
I shared with Dr. Dirksen, but I grew up in Ulysses and, and saw a few weeks ago that they had to close school early 'cause they didn't have the staff to cover, so, on a, on a school day, so, yeah. Um, Legislative, do you have anything, Jamie? Dr. Dirksen, you want to?
I, I will share what I know, and it's very limited, because right now, we're still waiting to find out if the governor's going to assign House Bill one thirteen, which is the funding bill, and uh, she has the choice of either vetoing it, letting it become law, or signing it. Uh, let it, let it become law by just not signing it, is what I mean, if she doesn't veto it, or she could sign the bill. And there has been no indication to, the last I heard. But there are uh, some things that we definitely want to pay attention to. Uh, some legislation she has signed, I, I would say it was minimal. Uh, it could be important to some people. Uh, and so, when I get a list put together, I will let you know, because there are some legislation that uh, she vetoed, but it was overridden by the legislature, by both the House and the Senate. Some legislation she vetoed, and it's been sustained, which means that uh, her veto stands, and uh, she may not veto the uh, school funding bill, because I've been told that uh, if she brought that back, there's a chance the legislature would bring up some of the bills that have already been vetoed that were sustained, that maybe in retaliation, they would approve, and she doesn't want certain things approved. So, uh, uh, politics is messy, as they say, and uh, nothing is complete yet. I do wanna point out, though, i- in the uh, House Bill one thirteen, it does establish uh, the CPI average, which is uh, Consumer Price Index, and for next year, they have established that that would be five thousand eighty-eight dollars per uh, FTE. This year, that number is, I think, four eight, seven eight, something like that, so it's just, it's an increase, a sizable increase in funding. Um, and then the best news of all is in this bill, it also includes high density at risk to not sunset until July of twenty twenty-seven. So, that would be uh, four years away. Um, so, that, that would be outstanding, if we could keep that. The, when you count both supplemental general and general fund, that's over three million dollars that Dodge City benefits from, because we qualify for high density at risk. And uh, Hammer was talking about when we did, redid the budget, that you get to, you, currently, you get to use the highest of your last two years enrollment. Th- the bill would change that to uh, the current year, when you're doing the budget, or the year before, whichever is higher. A lot of school districts have complained, if they're increasing in size, they don't get the advantage of that for the budget that year, and so they would switch back to that. However, it's very interesting, another provision in the bill is uh, th- they're unhappy with a lot of the uh, schools that are closing buildings, and if you close a building, you can only use your current year's enrollment, according to the new bill. Well, interestingly, if you're closing schools, it's because your enrollment is going down, and so if you can only use your current year, you're getting less money, without a doubt, than you would have, you know, to try to sustain for yet another year, so. Um, so anyway, there, there's a lot of complications, and uh, I will make sure I get to you what is finalized, uh, when, when that does come out.
I'm sure there'll be more things next month.
Thanks for that. Um, anything on calendar committee? All right, we do have you down, Jared, to look at bills before June's meeting. Announcements, May twentieth, the uh, one hundred and thirty-seventh commencement of Dodge City High School at ten-thirty in the morning at United Wireless Arena. It would be great if we could have all board members present for that. There is not a second Board of Education meeting scheduled in May. June third, uh, the Kansas Teachers Hall of Fame induction ceremony will be um, over at the Civic Center. June fifth through fifteenth, the Summer Institute, also in the Civic Center. June twelfth, Board of Education meeting, here in the boardroom at six o'clock, and then June twenty-sixth, Board of Education meeting, again at six o'clock. Are there items for future board meetings or additional information?
Thank you, Tracy. Um, I, I, I'm just curious, uh, it's, and maybe it's only been a couple, maybe just in my mind, I think we've reclassified a lot of positions lately, but I'm just curious how many positions we've reclassified from nine months or to whatever it is to, to twelve months. I'd like to see that number, what it's been over the last, however, however long, so...
I would agree. I would think that would be something that could be sent out.
Yeah, I just, we can review.
I'm sure we can look that up, and, and I will tell you that a lot of that has to do with recruitment. Um, at one time, it was popular to have the summers off to be with your kids, but now we're finding that a lot of people want to go to a twelve-month contract so that they have stable income throughout the year. And uh, if you only work nine months and they find a job in the summer that is better, easier, or a different situation, so, so a lot of that, that has to do with that. I'm speaking out of turn. I'm speaking on uh, HR's behalf, but I, I, I think there's some connection to that, and uh, we'll get that information to you and share it in a week and review. I do wanna go back to uh, the graduation. We, we try to meet at about ten fifteen in the northeast corner. Most of you know that, and uh, if you uh, don't leave your house till ten oh five, you're gonna be late, 'cause of the traffic line is, is long.
And the construction this year in the area is gonna make it even more tricky.
With the construction, and, yeah, yeah, so, so, something to think about.
I'll be there early if anybody wants in the building.
Yeah, you, you know that, don't you?
Yeah, I'll let you in. You have to text me, though. I'm not gonna be waiting for you. Text me. All right. Um, anything else for future board meetings? Anything, okay. We are in need of two executive sessions tonight. The first one um, is for discussion of negotiations, um, where you need twenty minutes for that.
Yes, we need twenty minutes. Um, Jason, Hammer, Clayton. Is Sarah joining you, Clayton?
Stephanie.
Stephanie?
Samantha. It started with an S.
What's the name?
Samantha.
Okay.
I got her, I got her.
That's not what I had in my head three times, but that's okay. Yep, yep.
You probably answered.
Anyone else, Jason?
Okay, and then the next one is for personnel matters, and we need twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes for personnel matters. Uh, the same people. Uh, actually, no, uh, Hammer will come out of uh, negotiations, and, and he'll come down and report. And then I do ask, uh, hopefully, I'm gonna get you to approve the agenda item, and so we're gonna come back to the table after the two executive sessions, and we'll take action, 'cause a lot of times, executive session, we don't take action afterwards tonight. Hopefully, we are, so, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion for executive session for twenty minutes for negotiations.
All right, motion by Tammy, second by Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero.
As long as it's put in the minutes.